August 1st and at 7:00 PM at the Central Office in Hamlin. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Dana Snyder, Board Member, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And two members not here, I'm sure they're on their way, but we have enough room for them in official meeting, and so we will proceed. Amy, does anybody sign in in public comment?
No.
Okay, that takes us to our regular agenda, Item 3 for presentation and reports. First up, we have Jan Hanlon slash Leslie Tyree from the Mountain State. You get what I'm saying?
Yes, thank you. Educational services.
Okay, there you go.
Hi, Jeremy. Just stuck on my heel. I'm okay. Yeah, yeah, you're on. All right. All right, Mr. Wilson is joining us by cell phone. You hear us okay, Jeremy?
Okay.
Well, thank you for having us here with you. It's certainly exciting. We haven't been here since before COVID. So it's always nice to come to a board meeting to talk about what we do at Mountain State ESC. A few years back, since Lincoln County is a founding member of Mountain State ESC, you'll remember that we kind of evolved out of RISA II, and we were in Huntington at the time, and RISAs at that time were funded by the state. Mountain State ESC, we are 100% entrepreneurial, and we're pretty excited about that. You know, we have an entrepreneurial spirit, and a lot of the board members will ask me, well, if you're entrepreneurial, doesn't that cost us additional funds if we use your services or products? And the answer is no. In House Bill 2711, we are an LEA, which stands for Local Education Agency, and each LEA, there's a threshold of what we can make and what we can't. So we're limited in the growth of our revenue, basically, is what that is. So when we started out, and Lincoln County was a founding member, we thought, the superintendents and the board members at the time that make up the Mountain State Council, we thought we were going to be really, really small. We thought we might have 12 employees, we may have 20 employees, but fortunately for us, now that we get to do business in all 55 counties instead of the six counties that RISA II did, we have expanded. So on any given day, we're running about between 400 and 500 full-time employees in just about all 55 counties, and then we have another 400 that are part-time. Most of the part-time employees are public service workers because we train all of the policemen, firefighters, first responders, EMS, like that throughout the entire state. So as soon as we became Mountain State ESC, we had applied for a grant, and thankfully, we were awarded that grant. So we went from about 10 employees that we brought from RISA II to about 50. And those 50 employees were mostly, you're familiar with adult education and the spokes program, all of those 50 employees were basically in the adult population. So we do like GED testing, all of the high school equivalency preparation from Mingo County all the way to Hancock County, all the way over to Randolph County. So, and we're really proud of the work that we're doing. Hello, Mr. Prestori.
Thank you, baby.
So, one of the things that I wanted to say to you as a board member too, is at Mountain State ESC, we're will and pleasure employees. And, you know, so where, I used to be a teacher and a principal, but being a will and pleasure employee is a lot different. And we needed to be that. That's what our founding fathers decided, that we really needed to be will and pleasure employees, just to be more accessible to counties. And we not only serve like the K-12 population, but we also serve municipalities and nonprofits as well. So, the will and pleasure employees, I'll give you an example. During COVID, most of you know that we needed to hire like healthcare workers, contact tracers and such. Well, you know, about a year into the COVID, we realized, well, we may not need the contact tracers anymore. So that gives boards of education like yourself the flexibility to determine what services that you need and when those need to conclude, which makes it a cost savings on each board. So if you'll take a look at our annual report, this is something that I do every year to give our council members, and we'll just walk through some of the services that we do. On, I guess it's page 2, you'll see the list of our council members. Mountain State ESC is made up of Wayne, Logan, Lincoln, Mason, and Mingo Counties. And we have the superintendent as well as a board member from each of those counties. And then I've already talked about adult education, but if you'll look there, you can see how many GED tests that we have given, and how many students have earned like different certifications in that program as well. Our revenue source that we have at Mountain State ESC is, and most of you have probably heard it, it's AEP-A. And sometimes when I talk about AEP-A across the state, most people say, oh, you all are the people that do the turf fields, like the turf fields at Marshall or WVU, maybe right here in Lincoln County as well, or in surrounding counties. That's what most people know AEP-A by. So let me talk to you a little bit about AEP-A, and I brought you an AEP-A folder. AEP-A, West Virginia is one of 29 states. And so we, our procurement officers bid things nationally so we can get them cheaper for local districts like you. So it's a cost savings. We've got a 29-state membership of AEP-A. I use turf as an example. We have probably seven or eight turf vendors for you to choose from. Most of the people in West Virginia prefer two of the companies. It's FieldTurf and the Motts Group, or the Motts Group, some people pronounce it that way. But we have had some turf fields from Hellis and such. But our AEP-A vendors, they have to meet in all 29 states' procurements, policies, and laws. And so each one of our vendors, they go through this fraternizing process of making sure that they can fulfill every county if it's requested in the state of West Virginia. If they are a construction vendor, they also have to have like a million-dollar bond attached to that, and that's per West Virginia policy. But our vendors are very important to us because that's the biggest revenue source that we have in Mountain State ESC. And I'll tell you, Mountain State ESC gets, we get our funding from different sources. Our AEP-A is our biggest revenue generator for us, that pays our bills. And then we have our staffing solutions. We also have, the second biggest is our grants. We just received an Appalachian Regional Grant of about a half a million dollars. We have legislative grants that we're running. We have a U.S. Department of Justice Grant that we're running, and we have several Bennett Foundation Grants that we're running too. When we apply for those grants, we apply on your behalf. That means that you can participate in those grant awards 100% at no cost. So that's really a cost savings to you. So we have AEP-A, we also have our grants, we have staffing solutions, and then finally, we have what's called shared services. And I think that you all are familiar with our shared services because that might be some tech guys that are hired by us, but that serve only your county. And at this time, I want to introduce our new Director of Finance. His name is Kevin Hess. I have been leading the charge of AEP-A, and I'm another colleague of mine, Tammy Stowers. And we not only do the turfs, but we do computers. You've probably heard of CDWG. We have Quill as one of our vendors. But Kevin is going to, he's brand new. He just started about two weeks ago, and on the second day, Mason County called and said, hey, we need your services. So he hasn't actually started with us doing some procurement. What we want to do in the state of West Virginia, and we hope that you agree too, is I have a vision. We're procuring all of these big vendors at the national level, and then I look around at these small mom-and-pop shops, you know, that are slowly going out of business. So what my vision is, is we want to keep the taxpayer dollars in the state of West Virginia. So we want to procure some of our homegrown businesses. And some of those that I was looking at is maybe technology, you know, we need people to service in the area of technology. I was also looking at maybe something like pest control for municipalities and schools. Let's see, oh, sporting goods. Sporting goods is another one. I think that there's probably a monopoly on it in the state of West Virginia, and people call me all the time, is this mom-and-pop shop part of your cooperative? And no, it's not. But that's where we're going with Mountain State, and that's our vision, that we want to grow the economy in the state of West Virginia. So we're going to try to bring those mom-and-pop shops into our fold. But we need to do it slowly, and we need to do it correctly, just to make sure there's longevity of a relationship there. So I'd like to introduce Kevin Hess. Kevin Hells from Nicholas County. Matter of fact, when I did his interview, he was the third eldest, I guess, or the most veteran business official in the state. He is a CPA, and we think he is going to be beneficial not only to Mountain State, but to each one of our counties. One of the things that we envision Kevin doing other than the AEP-A is also training new business officials across the state. He is going to become their mentor, and I had a discussion with Kevin, and I loved our discussion because I wanted to make sure, we've waited five years to get the right person. So I wanted to make sure he had an entrepreneurial spirit, but he also was committed to West Virginia like we are, and to grow in our economy. And, you know, I said, Kevin, we're responsible for our own salary. And it didn't scare him. And some people, it does. You know, it's scary whenever you come from a government job, and then you go into an entrepreneurial position, and your boss looks at you and says, okay, you're responsible for your own salary. How are you going to make it? You know, some people are not ready to answer that. But Kevin was on point. He's looking forward to doing some new things, and hopefully, we can be of benefit to finance all across the state in K-12 and even municipalities if needed. Some of the grants that I had alluded to just right before, our Stop It Grant. This is an anonymous reporting system. I think Lincoln County does participate. You'll see the state there. We're real big on school safety. It was something that was in the forefront of my mind when we formed Mountain State, and I think it was after all of us had watched those situations on the news. I was watching Uvalde, and I was like, you know what, now's the time to do something. Because we've been very blessed in the state of West Virginia. So we need to, you know, nothing can go on until you have a safe school. You've got to make sure that that's in place first before any learning can take place. So this was one grant that we were awarded through the U.S. Department of Justice. This was a very large grant, and very successful. We're getting ready to do our Safe School Conference at the end of October, and, no, the end of September, I'm sorry. The end of September last year, we had sold out. I encourage anybody that has any kind of position that needs to know about school safety to come. We're going to have four huge national keynote speakers. This year, our conference is actually going to be two days. We have some breakout sessions. We partner with the West Virginia Homeland Security, also the FBI, and also the state police. So you'll have all interested parties in the same room, giving you opinions on what their experience has been, how you can provide a safe culture here in Lincoln County. Another grant that we have is a digital literacy grant. That's Learning.com. And, you know, all of our students, K-12, have technology standards. So if you participate in Learning.com, that's how you can ascertain that those standards are being met by your students. I had mentioned staffing solutions. If you'll just look there, and we don't list all of them, but we list, I guess, the Big Rocks that we do. We do a lot of curriculum and a lot of professional development. We provide finance, resources to counties, healthcare, operations. One of the things that we started doing lately is hiring clerks of the works. And we started with Cavil County, and we started with two. And after some conversations like with the SBA, Canal County Schools, I thought, oh my goodness, I just, I didn't really even know what a clerk of the works was, but I do now. So I think at present day, we're up to six now. And, you know, the SBA didn't have an allocation this past round. And so I see that area growing. You need a good clerk of the works to make sure that you stay in budget, and your timelines are being met. And we believe that we have provided good clerks of the works thus far. One of the things that we do is we have what we call a beef bid. We provide fresh pork and beef to Cavil County's nutrition program. They serve fresh, locally grown animals that are processed at a local processing plant along with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And we also have a compliance officer to make sure that everything from the time of delivery at the processing plant to the time of delivery at the school district, everything is good. So that was something that unique. We only do that with Cavil, but I will tell you that on the days that we serve fresh meat, that that's the highest population that eats their breakfast and lunch programs. So, let's see, what else on there? Oh, one of the things that some of our districts have been asking us for is support with social and emotional health. And that's the big buzzword since COVID. So we also provide those. One of our largest shared service revenue generating programs is our school bus operating programs. And if you'll see at the top of the page, we're in 19 of the 55 counties. We're in Boone, Brooke, Cavil, Calhoun, Hancock, Canal, Lincoln, Logan, Mason, Mingo, Ohio, Putnam, Ritchie, Upsher, Wayne, and Worth. And then we also provide testing to Marshall, Roan, and Wetzel. That's one of my favorite programs, just because I've gotten to know a lot of the bus trainers around the state. And, you know, the last couple of years, it's been difficult to get bus drivers out on the road. So we feel like we've aggressively gone after that population, and if you need help with that, we're always available. A new program at Mountain State ESC that we have started is also our communications. We were very fortunate enough to hire Chris Williams as our communications person. Chris has some experience at Channel 8, and then also with some other TV markets from out of state, I think, North Dakota, and I forget where else. And then we've hired Troy Alexander as well to support Chris. And we've grown our communications. I think that we started with four, and we've picked up two more counties as well. One of the things that we're getting ready to do, especially if we find a grant for it, is we want to have our own TV studio in Dunbar at Mountain State ESC. And then that way, if you need to showcase students, or a teacher, or do any kind of video, maybe it's on a levee that, you know, you're getting ready to hack, that would be a place that you could come, and then we could do something at a professional level for you as a service. So we're looking forward to providing like an in-house studio. One of the other popular items that we have is, I always call it English as a Second Language Support, but I think it's called EL now instead of ESL. So we do these all the time, at least once a month. If you're interested in having EL support, we would love to do that for you. Putnam County. Putnam County came to us about two years ago, and one of the things that they had talked about was academic coaches and interventionists. And we've been, we have been highly successful there, and I just think it's a fabulous program. On page 10 there, we have legal services. Most people, you know, they always ask me, so what do you do? What does that mean? And people don't know what an ESC is. I mean, they have no idea. And it's hard to condense it down into words. But what I like to say is we're a resource broker, and we'll customize whatever it is, like the hogs and the cow thing that I was talking to you. That was a vision of Cavil County, and they just brought it to us. So whatever your vision is, that's what we like to do. But most people know Mountain State ESC by our legal services. And all of you know Leslie Tyree. She's been with us for, no, a long time. A long time. Leslie and I've been together, and, you know, she's a big reason why we have been successful. Because when we started Mountain State ESC, we were changing from RISA, there were different agencies that didn't know what to do with us. They were like, what are you going to do? What do you do? And if it hadn't been for Leslie, looking at House Bill 2711 and interpreting that, then we probably couldn't have made it. So we're especially grateful for Leslie. And I'm going to let Leslie talk just for a second about legal services and our investigative service.
Thank you, Jan. Jan is always so thoughtful to compliment me on assisting with the ESC. But honestly, we always say, if it weren't for Jan, we would not be here with our legal services or any of our services. So we're very grateful for her. As you all know, I provide legal services to five county school boards solely. I do their legal services. It's a cost-saving measure. We work with, I work with four other school districts on ancillary services. They have other attorneys that are in-house or what have you, but I do extra things or special things for them. And basically, it's just a cost savings measure. It all began many years ago when county school districts were experiencing a great, great burden from paying for legal services. And at the time, RISA II was in existence, and this is my 10th year with RISA II and now the ESC. But 10 years ago, RISA II said, we've got to do something to help these school districts. They're spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, some of them millions and millions of dollars on legal services, and we need to do something to help them. And so that's how legal services got started. And we do provide those at a very, very low cost to school districts because we are entrepreneurial, but we are here for cost savings and to help. So that's what I do. This month makes the 30th year that I've practiced law, and about 23 of those years have been in education. So I found something I like, and I stuck with it, and it's been great ever since. But what I want to do is I want to introduce you all to Chuck Kingery. This is the director and the head of our investigative services, and we now have three investigators. But we are so fortunate to have Mr. Kingery. He's a retired law enforcement officer, has a long history, a stellar history, and we are fortunate, fortunate to have him. So I will let him just say hi to you and tell you anything he would like to tell you. And we're just here to help. So let us know what you need. Go ahead, Mr. Kingery.
Well, first off, thanks for letting us come out and speak with you guys. Can I go by Chuck, not Mr. Kingery? So basically, what we do for our investigative services, for the past school year, we've done 68 different investigations. 17 of those were Title IX cases. And of the other cases that we do, I mean, they run the game, right? Everything from policy misconduct to the pure grievance cases. Sure you're all familiar with 4373 investigations and so forth. All of those things are what we do. And we're especially useful to school districts in cases where you may need someone, an independent investigator who has no vested interest in the outcome, to offset some, you know, sometimes you get complaints that there's some type of favoritism or something like that. Those things do happen. And in order to avoid all of that, that's where we're especially useful to the school districts. We also, in doing these investigations, we can also, not just do the investigation itself, but we can also assist your school administrators in how they should conduct investigations, right? Because ultimately, that's where it's going to begin, is with your school administrators. They're going to start the ball rolling and do their initial investigation, make a determination if something needs to happen, or if this is going to be a bigger case or not, and report to superintendent or assistant superintendents, and then decide from there if you need anything more than just handled at the school level. So we can assist with that. As Leslie mentioned, we just got our third investigator. I started today, actually. So I'll be bringing him on board, and he will probably be doing a lot of the cases here in Lincoln County. And so I'll, as the weeks go on, try to bring him up and get him introduced to you guys. But I just want you to know that we're here as a resource for you, if you need us. And I don't know what, I guess that's about it.
Thank you.
I wanted to brag on Leslie a little bit. You know, I always talk to her because we pay, as an attorney, we pay her minimal of what she could get paid in the private sector. So, you know, boards of education have access to Leslie 365 days a year, anytime of day or night. And as you know, some of the big educational law firms charge in 15-minute increments. So, you know, it's just reassuring that if you have something that happens at a football game on a Friday night, 10:30 or 11:30, and you need to call your attorney, she's available. And, you know, a lot of our school districts appreciate the fact. And then I have to tell, just a quick caveat on Chuck. So I had a school district call me in, and the superintendent, assistant superintendent, I go in to see them, and they were talking about adding another service. And they had two sets of files, this high, about 30 foot, four foot high. And I didn't know why I was there. And they said, you see those files there? And I said, yes, sir, I do. What is that? And they said, well, these are misconduct cases that we have going on in the county, and we need some support. So as we started investigating how that would work, and Leslie, this was her brilliant mind, she said, well, we need to get the right person. So we knew that we needed to have one Title IX of new, because there were new federal regulations for Title IX cases. And then we needed to have one general investigator. So one of the most powerful attorneys in the state of West Virginia, and you all probably know him, said, Chuck is one of the, his reports are always the best, the best I've ever read, and he's the best person on the witness stand that I've ever seen. So we kind of went after Chuck and said, hey, is this something, he was retired, is this something that you might be interested in? And we were fortunate enough to get him. But we also do cohorts for teachers, and we train future principals, I guess. And we do that at a minimal cost. And that's a partnership with Marshall. I think it's like $600, $700 a course for that. But one of the most exciting things is we've partnered with Marshall, and we're going to go nationwide with our cohort. So you all have seen the commercials, and you're the first people to find out about and we're going to go nationwide with our cohort so you all have seen the commercials and you're the first people to find out about that but you've seen the commercials of Grand Canyon University and Southern New Hampshire University well that's what we want to become we want to we want our good partners Marshall University to become something like that nationwide and again what does that do it not only helps our own workforce but it also puts more money in the West Virginia economy it'll probably take us a couple of years to do it but we're announcing our intent at a meeting in California at the end of November and the first of December so we're we're extremely excited about that another thing that we do is our substitute teaching one of the things that we do differently is we're real flexible so let's say that you're in dire needs of substitutes and you've got two people interested they could start that day or the next day as soon as we get them onboarded we have a service of Medicaid services which Lincoln County does participate in and you'll see there we've added two counties to our Medicaid as well now we have eight counties but they're Campbell Jackson Lincoln Logan Mason Mingo Wayne and Wood you know it's important that your special ed staff your healthcare staff everybody's trained in Medicaid so you can maximize your cost settlements to have get money back for Lincoln County I'd already mentioned our public service training there and our technology services on page fourteen look at page fifteen this is the Mid Ohio Valley Workforce Development Board and you might say how in the world does Mount State ESC get involved with a workforce development board well a couple about three years ago we had the Mid Ohio Valley Workforce Development Board call us and they were looking for somebody to do their finances and they were in between executive executives and you know that's all the counties like in Wood Jackson Pleasant all of those Richie all of those counties right there so we were approached I went up and presented to their board so we did sort of like an acquisition where all of their employees became our employees so now you know they have retirement and they have healthcare and things like that and we work with the Workforce Development Office at the Capitol and we made sure that you know they were supportive of what we're doing and they're doing a fantastic job so we're happy to have them a part of Mount State we run the Jobs and Hope program that is for people that have been incarcerated or maybe have had some addiction problems and what we do is we develop a plan for those people no matter where they are if they need to get education we provide that as well but we have twenty-two transition agents across the state this past year we had nineteen referrals and sixteen hundred active participants so they're doing some great work and you could probably watch the news and see what kind of work that they're doing I've already talked about the clerks of the works we have six of those now and we're super excited about helping build the schools of the future so we do we also do some conferences this past year we did an evidence-based practice conference that was in Charleston and I think we had about two or three hundred there we also do your academic fairs like Math Field Day we do science fairs social studies fairs for some counties we did a crucial accountability that's where we took principals or school leaders and taught them how to have those hard conversations with your employees you know those employees that may have been missing too much school or or for whatever reason so we're going to build on those crucial conversations and our leadership program as well our West Virginia Safe School Conference that was probably what I was the most proud of last year I do encourage you to attend this year we are going to be advertising the whole conference next week so if you've got any questions I think Frank has my cellphone just get ahold of me and I'll I would be happy to explain that to you okay and the last thing in our annual report that we do is we were we received grants to provide support to like the non-public and schools around the state and we did that out of the first time in history that non-public schools received like covid monies like the K twelve had received SFR fundings so we managed that grant for those schools there's like a hundred and twenty-six of those in the state now we don't do all hundred and twenty-six because all hundred and twenty-six don't participate but we do do a lot of those and that is coming to a close so I just wanted to take the time to thank you for allowing us to do what we do you like I said we're founding members you determine what kind of services that we do at Mount State we believe that we are cost savings you know charging what the actual cost of a person or a product is with five or six percent on top of that is really minimal so and we try to work with you as much as we can to keep those costs down low reason why we do charge the five or six percent is just because of maybe payroll purposes that we have to you know initiate or some accounts payable problems or onboarding and things like that so it's a pleasure to get to work with you and we certainly appreciate everything that you do if you have any questions
Mr. Fostori sits on your board
yes sir
and well four of us Mr. Wilson's on the phone and four of us came on nude in this board last year and we heard about state and had no idea what that was and it took a great deal of studying primarily Mr. Fostori being on your board kept relating information and answering my questions what you have done here tonight and four of you have cleared a lot of things up to me and I sat here and I thought boy I would like to have had this last year at my first meeting when I came on the board so I would suggest that after every election that there's a new board present this to the new board members or have an orientation for all new board members
that's
that would get us off the running it's taken me a year and I've learned more tonight than I have all year to get up to speed on this and I think probably some of the other board members
you know what President Bell I have a friend an old friend and every time I see them I don't see them too often but we're really good friends they'll say now what do you do again and is your little company gonna make it you know they always ask me that and you know it's really hard to wrap your head around the enormity of what we do because people like your prestigious board determines what we do you know and if that's that's where we have the flexibility if we try something and it doesn't work then we you know go back to the drawing board and we make sure that we get something that does work for you so we appreciate Lincoln County and I sincerely mean this you know there were four little counties and we had about twenty employees at RISA II that had no idea what they were gonna do just no idea and it's truly a blessing that our little I always say I grew up in a cold camp you know didn't have a lot of money but if it wasn't for those smaller counties that really understood you know hey we could do this and we could save money and share the cost and I don't think that we have any employees that are not grateful to you so if you would like us to go another direction you have the power just get ahold of me let me know what it is that you would like to see and we'll make it work
thank you all all of you at this time the floor belongs to Mr. Justin Saunders Saunders from the Good News Club
good evening thank you for letting me speak tonight
I don't know can I let my phone
yes sir so I can turn it up for you two but would you like me to turn it up for you in the back
yes please
ladies and gentlemen I'm here I'm a teacher at Guyan Valley Middle School I teach math there I've taught there for four years and I'm here not representing Child Evangelism Fellowship which is the parent organization behind the Good News Clubs but I'm also accompanied by CEF representative Jeff McCallis Pete Davidson Dixie Keaton ladies and gentlemen two years ago both Duval and West Hamlin had Good News Clubs covid came along and as a result it shut down a lot of things including Good News Clubs they never restarted so tonight I'm here to ask the board to reapprove Good News Clubs for all Lincoln County schools this would bring moral education to our schools as a totally voluntary program it's often implemented after school piggybacking oftentimes on an existing after-did school service it can also be held during lunchtimes or in breakfast times it's basically implemented by voluntary churches one or more churches who are willing to come into the schools talk to students who are willing to hear the gospel and this is entirely voluntary there's no cost to students there's no cost to the schools whatsoever this program's been around for a lot of years and it's been in Campbell County West Virginia all throughout the United States it brings a lot of good things to our students in doing so I'm asking that our board reapprove allowing these schools to have Good News Clubs in each one I can answer some general questions but I have some experts here and in fact Miss Dixie Keaton has got some literature to pass out to our board in case you're wondering I have
Davidson you see well we graduated high school together how long have you been over the hunting community
eleven and a half years
Mr. McCallis back there was one of my career tech ed teachers in Campbell County
y'all just get back together
I can say Mr. Saunders that my church sponsored club but in Hamlin and like I remember when it was a good experience for the adult there wasn't anything out of the way it was just a great
I guess I have a quick question but you said that did the board do away with that for covid or just you said it's way away is if the board didn't have any action then we still should have these things there should be no need to have any actions
Mr. Saunders approached me I've known Mr. Saunders before and so he started in Campbell County so for me for a while he approached me the other day asked to talk to me and was telling me about Good News Clubs and I was familiar with it because they're used to it in Campbell County and I said well you know it might be a good idea if you just go address the board and re-acclimate them with what you know what it is and what's going on
that's a great idea especially if you're well
we can research that
especially if it's never been revoked yes go do it
we just need to find out if it ever was revoked
or getting something up here again in two weeks yeah two weeks for four months good experience probably we're all four
yeah we are we just have to find out if it was stopped do we need to start it again officially
to the best of our knowledge it has never been revoked you probably have quite a few questions but I also wanted to let you know that I'm not getting paid by CEF I my heart's hopefully in the right place I want to see our students our community change and change for the better and there's see an organization come in where volunteers have a organized program and each one of those volunteers that comes into the school has passed a background check and also gone through CEF training and met that standard of training with certification those people are ready to bring the gospel into our schools in a safe manner for students and I can't see anything bad about this this is moral education we all know that we've we've come to a place where we teach and we teach and we teach and the best we can do is perhaps to teach the golden rule but this moral education is still needing improvement in our schools if you have further questions I have three experts who can answer all your questions
I have a question is there anyone here that doesn't know what the Good News Club is anybody know
if you don't get on your website Child Evangelism Fellowship I'm watching Sean's story
if you have any other questions just let me know but thank you for your time
thank you
okay break us to item four approval of the minutes in twenty fifth meeting
I'll make that motion
Burns I have a second I'll second Snyder all those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye opposed and Mr. Wilson still with us okay so it's five votes all right break us to the administrative section of the meeting is there any discussion
so I would like it would be nice and if we've gone over this if the item had nauseating if we don't vote on something today that's happening or the week after it happens so that's just
looking at the dates on
yeah the overnight trip is today
yeah
we're going through it so it'd be nice just to have a
I want to
there's an issue when we had we had same issues last year we approved the academic event took place several times to pay for it
yes and it might be better
guys we would like to know anytime
I've charged Cody with completing a district account that will go out to all principals they have they will be able they have to submit all their information to us and for Cody put that all out in one needle package so everybody has an input calendar of things that's happening you know
and especially since you know we're legally responsible for approving all the ESC personnel can the day not the day of
any other discussion I have a motion for approval so Mr. Snyder Wilson second Wilson second all those who are in favor of approving administrative items say aye
aye
opposed and pass down to the finance section in the meeting any discussion I'll ask for a motion to approve motion to approve the story second
I'll second
Burns all those in favor say aye
aye
give you opposed and it's unanimous break us to personnel section that's your blue sheet any discussion my question is what's an innovation specialist
they 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 take work orders from teachers for technology They, they take work orders from teachers, uh, technology, what, you know, they need a program put on their computer. Or if their, their mouse is not working, whatever the case may be.
Technology.
They take that, they're, they're charged with, uh, you know, helping distribute the iPad. So every school has one. Right, the high school will have two.
And these are extracurricular, they're extracurricular. Well, even though it may be done during the day, it's, uh, it's extra. Correct. Okay, got you. Any other discussion on personnel? Not, I'll. I'm sorry, go ahead. Jeremy speak up.
His wife is on the.
His wife is not very sweet.
Yeah, I'm against that.
Okay, uh, any more discussion on personnel? As Lori makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Snyder, all in favor of approving personnel items, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And none. Break us in comments and concerns section of the meeting. We have a Duval midway update.
We do. Uh, on Friday, uh, last week, uh, got a call from Greg Martin, the architect. Uh, that said that Mr. Womack, is that right? Did, sorry, Mr. Womack wanted to meet with us regarding the, uh. The project and that, uh, we can do it in routine. I've held on, uh, we're not gonna go to team. We won't drop Charleston. It's important. I want, I don't want to think by express that we're not forward so much. We, we went to the meeting and I felt very good about it. Uh, and when I was talking to Mr. Womack and, and the other, uh, and Greg. I, I told him, I said, I'm looking at this through the lens of a builder. Done contracting, I've been there, done this. And, uh, so we looked at some different things, some different types of moving, moving configurations around on the building. While still maintaining classroom integrity, while maintaining glass space integrity. But there were a lot of things that could be taken out, like for example, the illegal peers that were on the fill section. That saved a substantial amount of money. Moving, uh, the other, the kind of actually taking the whole building and flipping it over. And putting the parking down here with a bus loop and, uh, parking here and which eliminated a lot of cut on the backside. Which is also going to save money. So at the end of the day, uh, uh, Mr. Davis can tell you. Uh, Mr. Womack was very excited about what we had presented. And, uh, so I got a report back today, actually, from Mr. Martin with the updated costs and figures. And it looks like we have trimmed the deficits substantially. Uh, so now to go back out the bid and hopefully we'll get somebody with a little better, a little better bid process in there. And, uh, now the, the scope of the project is not so much you're trying to build on fill and that liability. That, that we can get some more bidders that will actually take a look at it now. The, the, a lot of the liability piece is gone since we're no longer depending on, uh, building, uh, posts and, and extra concrete to make the building stand. So I think that we, we're gonna take a lot of the liability piece out of it and be able to actually have a little more cost savings than we had written initially thought. So, uh, he was very excited, Mr. Womack. He said, uh, the only comment he made to me was, you know, when you come back to us. I need you to have a little more skin in the game and, uh, we're in your A-game. Said, uh, he said, told Mr. Davis now that we got more done in that meeting than we've gotten done in several months.
We have a projected date for the next meeting and projected date.
We are, the, the email I got today, I'm sending what's called a, uh. A waiver to, to the State Department on, because one of the things we had to do was remove, there was millimetry peaty space in there. So we ended up removing that and adding onto the gym space. So, and, and then adding a curtain down the middle of the gym, much like Cartz Pre-KA is, but while expanding the gym. Uh, the main gym. So we had to look at, you know, looking policy and then we have to go in with a wavering on that. But we called the gentleman while we were there and he says, not a problem, just get it in. So I have that today. I actually have already signed it and returned it. Then see what the approval process will be on that. And then, once that's done, we will go back to Mr. Womack and then we can put it out of bid. So I'm, I'm gonna say, you know, we should be, I'm, I'm hoping back out of bid by third week of August.
And this is August first.
And he suggested that we pull the, uh, the land prep. It itself out from the whole project and bid that out. So we can start getting the land ready. Put that bit out, get that bit out there first. So we can get that building down and get the land ready for the new school.
Okay, that's very fine. I, I don't know anything about construction. But as we demolish that build, all that brick and concrete, whatever. Uh, would that save anything if you do lives and put that wherever Park and that's going to be?
So.
Now, the thing with the, with the old buildings, one of the things that we have to look at is there, that what the, the bait cost on, and actually demo on this would be a bait. Uh, those buildings built in the eighties and prior to, there's, there's a, a lot of that, uh, last master. So the arrangement is going to be the problem. Uh, I wonder if they abated all of it. With that, we have research.
Yeah, it's all gone.
On the, uh. That I told you I was gonna have done and put out this week, I got on it this weekend. And, uh, found out that I had to have an access email to be able to get on that. And, uh, I didn't know I had an access email, so I couldn't get anything done. So I talked to Mr. Barnett. He also can do that same as I am and he's volunteered after I begged him to. So we've got two weeks to get that appraisal in. Mr. Barnett's put a notice file with that. We'll take care of it. So I got out of that. So, uh, thank you for breaking through there. Any have any other discussion? If not, uh, see, we have a motion.
You guys hear that? She went over this afternoon for, for me and then watched the practice and everybody's got a temper their step. It's, it's pretty amazing. About the kids, you know, the practicing over there.
Yeah, I went over last night to, uh, watch some of the first practice and, uh.
Randy told me they were gonna snow.
We got a long way to go.
Yeah.
But that field's up and running with kids shooting it and the, uh. Football coach stopped me, uh, because I was getting gas about nine o'clock last night. He said, all those kids were thrilled about it and some of them thought they were running much faster about that tournament. They did. But we got a long way to go. It's, uh, when you start it and I want to give, uh, special recognition. Not here tonight, the Austin, who's their chief financial officer who's pushed pennies and moved things around. And, and got the funds to do that. Uh, we, I just came from the meeting over this evening. Living some information to bank or more funds, uh, state, uh, in that regard to finish it out. We may or may not get those, who knows, but, uh, it's, it's a whole lot more than we had last year at this time. And whether we play football or not will depend upon the time of day we want to play. Those lights may not be up. Uh, scoreboards may not be up. Session stands may not be up. Press box may not be up. We have no control over the construction, but also Lucas has done a phenomenal job to get us this far. And the board itself directed things, so I appreciate all of that. It was kind of good. Anybody else have anything? Okay, we have a, uh. Item on the agenda to go into executive session, discuss facilities. Uh, executive session provisions, uh, doesn't permit for facilities themselves. Unless there's a financial aspect to it that would, uh. Hamper what we're doing in facilities, if that financial part got out, such as. Cost of some item that we're going to put out or buy or purchase. So I, I, I'm gonna ask. I guess you and, and Mr. Krimings, is, is there anything in this facilities discussion? That should not be discussed in public from a financial point of view?
Like the discussion is primarily financial. That's. If that answers your question.
Is it something that would hinder the bid process or something like that?
Oh, no, it wouldn't hinder a bid office.
It doesn't really meet the level of going into executive session. If it's not comfortable, you want to, uh, discuss in. Public, it might jeopardize something in that nature. We can reframe that, but, uh.
We, we probably need to table it then to another time.
Okay. All right, that's just do that. Motion in the second to table item nine.
I'll say.
Barnes, all in favor of table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. Okay, with that, uh, we're ready to adjourn until Tuesday, August fifteenth at seven PM here at this location. All in favor of, do I have a motion? Wilson, Wilson?
Thanks.
Snyder, and the time is eight oh two. All in favor, say aye. The meeting is adjourned.